Good evening. I'd like to call the October 15, 2018 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. We will start by taking the roll.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Sims? Mrs. Cardy?
Here.
Mr. Earl?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron? Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Sims and Mrs. Cameron?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please take the roll.
Mr. Roth?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Motion carries, and Mr. Sims is now here for the record. Next item, we will now, if you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is the approval of minutes. We do have some sets of minutes. I don't know if anybody, if everyone has had an opportunity to review them. We have minutes from October 3rd, from July 19th, from September 17th, September 4th. Is there a motion?
Do we have to do them all individually?
No, please, individually, please.
Individually, okay. All right. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the July 19th, 2018 special meeting?
Uh, 23rd?
Since 17th?
July 23rd?
Uh, I've got...
July 19th and 20th.
July 19th.
It's the 23rd, I think.
The version I have says July 23rd.
Right.
I'm only approving the 19th.
No, we've got a different version printed here than what you're showing on the screen. We have the July 23rd that's been distributed electronically.
I have it big on the cover of Rock. It says the 19th on the other page. Actually, the 19th is a little bit different here.
The 19th?
Says 7/23.
I have a copy here from minutes from a year ago, because it has Doug Zuck present.
It's the 19th.
But the meeting was on the 23rd.
My computer is this, with this, it has this actual save thing, auto-save, and I don't knock it off right away.
Okay.
But the minutes that they have, they're hanging out of the correct ones.
Okay, and the date of those is?
July 23rd?
July 23rd, 2018. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any corrections to these minutes?
I think so.
Seeing none, all those in favor, or, I don't know why I keep doing that. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Roth?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Pass.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries with two passes. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the September 4, 2018 meeting?
Mayor, I have a comment about the September 4 meeting minutes.
Very good.
On page 11, this would be item N, with regard to the purchase of the Mac Cab and chassis drop. It said all voted aye, I was on roll call, all voted aye, but I was a no vote on that one.
Okay, you were a no vote on?
Item N.
Item N. Okay. Kelly, have you made the note?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Are there any other corrections to the September 4 minutes? Seeing none, did we have a motion to accept on this one?
No, I'll move to accept the September 4, 2018 minutes, subject to Councilman Rock's correction.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion to accept by Councilman Weisman, second by Councilman Rock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Roth?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the September 17, 2018 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections to this set? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, and seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Roth?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Pass.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Yeah, very good. And then finally, minutes of the September 3, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion?
October 3rd, perhaps.
Oh, October 3rd, thank you. October 3rd, 2018. It says October 3rd, I misread it.
Just excited about the logo, Mayor.
I am, very.
I move that we adopt those minutes, the October 3, 2018 minutes.
Oh, you have a correction, okay. Mr. Sims, what is it?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
On page 4, I just wanted to add that Sims added that he thought it would be in the better interest of the committee to have not just residents and elected officials.
So it says interest of the city, it should say interest of the committee?
And, and, and not just residents and elected officials.
Okay. And elected officials.
Mayor?
Yes.
I wasn't in attendance at that meeting. I counted both places.
Oh, okay. Well then...
Strike the first one.
Yes, as I recall, that is correct. You were absent, okay. All right, Mrs. Thomas, do you have those changes? Okay, very good. Any other changes to these minutes? Now, Mr. Weisman, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the October 3, 2018 minutes, subject to the changes by the Vice Mayor and Councilman Sims.
Very good, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Roth?
Pass.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Pass.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. That would be all the sets of minutes we have before us. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes, total time allowed is 15 minutes. We often relax this and allow for some time, but if you can keep your comments economical and to the point, we'd love to hear from you. Does anybody have anything that they would care to bring up to the city this evening? If you do, if you would please come up to the podium, speak into the microphones so that you can be heard for the record, state your name and address for your record, for the record at the beginning. Excuse me?
My name is nobody.
Nobody?
A few preliminary statements. We are endowed by suffering with suffrage. Grandchildren go through extraordinary suffering through the course of their maturation. And have the same underlying suffrage rights to choose Republican Democratic form and reform that anyone else carries. Local county, state government carries the right to extend suffrage to anyone younger than T8, than 18. While I do not know the mechanisms for securing this delta at the local level to bring suffrage to those who are chronologically aged five and above, or those who are saged, emerocium or beyond in the sagacity scales of the periodic table. Other localities like Hyattsville, Maryland have extended suffrage, limited only by a bar on child labor, to souls at the chronological age, the age of T6, 16. Let's not cager grandchildren's capacity and urgency to learn and perform virtuously within this world. We have musical moral marathons that only emerocium grad students, emerocium micronauts, can plot, choreograph, and perform. The standard of review should not be undertaken under parents' patre alone, but under in-local grandparentis. It is my belief that in the eyes of every grandparent, students from emerocium and beyond can cast a vote with intelligence and with responsibility. I feel obligated to inform you that while I'm resident and have served as an educator in the UHCH school district, I'm not voting in University Heights in this election. I'll be exercising my right to vote in Boca Raton, Florida. My apologies for my inability to code this more elegantly. Thank you for everything, absolutely everything. I can't repay the debt. I do not know precisely what's taking place within this world at the present moment. This experiment is magical and difficult, but I can't imagine that there's anything better to spend further time on than developing the capacities of everyone to decide, live, upmodel, enact questions of right and wrong, from the earliest stages to the most well-seasoned I'm available for any questions. And I can give a manifold of examples, moral, that grad students, grandparents-to-be, are best suited to bring forward with the perspective of 95 years ahead of them within this world, running to row 21, HON, T3, row 2113.
If there are no questions, then thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Very good, seeing none, we will move on to the reports and communications from the mayor and taking of action. I'm going to dispense with my typical mayor's report to talk about a single issue that faces this country, and that issue is gun violence. In the course of the last year, I've been frustrated by the state of the law and the state of Ohio. As a municipality, we are preempted by the Ohio General Assembly through Ohio Revised Code 9.68 from passing any kind of legislation regulating the ownership, possession, purchase, or other acquisition, transport, storage, carrying, sale, or other transfer of firearms, their components, and their ammunition. Many residents have asked, what can we do? Enter the Greater Cleveland Congregations and the Do Not Stand Idly Buy campaign. Do Not Stand Idly Buy is a market-based approach to changing the gun industry in this country. Our tax dollars buy about 40% of the guns in this country. The military buys 25%, and law enforcement about 15%. 40% of the customer base should be enormous market power. Every gun purchased by the public sector is purchased for the safety and security of Americans. So it only follows reasonably that those of us responsible for gun procurement, for the safety of our fellow citizens, consider the overall safety practices of gun manufacturers. Towards these ends, Do Not Stand Idly Buy has prepared a request for information on all gun manufacturers, asking for information in three areas: distribution practices in the United States, new technologies to improve gun safety and assist law enforcement, and other information on the company's commitment to safety. Now, so far, none of the gun manufacturers serving these requests have responded to them with any sort of sufficient details. Nevertheless, we must keep asking. Just today, we learned that there was some movement, that there had been shareholders who have asked Ruger, and who have asked Smith &amp; Wesson, or their new name, they have a new name now, but basically have asked these two companies for information with regard to gun safety and manufacturer responsibility to prepare gun safety reports. Now, I'd like to take a moment here to recognize Susan Reese and Donna Weinberger. Would you mind standing up, please? Thank you. I met with Mrs. Reese and Mrs. Weinberger earlier this year and throughout the last few months about this campaign, and we've discussed this issue thoroughly. And while it is modest in some respects, it is a legal step that we may take, and one that has been taken by mayors and safety directors in 18 states, as well as 19 municipalities and government entities here in Ohio, including the mayors and safety directors of Beechwood, Bedford, Bedford Heights, Cleveland, Cleveland Heights, Cuyahoga County, Columbus, Dayton, East Cleveland, Lakewood, Maple Heights, Moreland Hills, Oakwood, Orange Village, Parma Heights, Shaker Heights, South Euclid, Warrensville Heights, and the Director of Security Operations at the Cleveland Clinic Foundation. And that is why this evening I'm making a proclamation to add University Heights to the list, and I will read it now. Whereas more than 33,000 people per year in the United States have been killed with firearms in recent years, and whereas a resident of the United States is 25 times as likely to be murdered with a gun than is a resident of other advanced nations, and whereas Americans from across the political spectrum agree that our nation should strive to reduce the number of our neighbors who are killed or injured with firearms or terrorized by gun-related crime, and whereas the companies that manufacture and distribute firearms have the ability to take actions that will reduce the incidence of gun-related crimes and accidental shootings in the United States, and whereas these actions, including improvements and innovations in gun safety technologies and distribution practices, can be taken voluntarily by these companies and without the slightest harm to the established rights of Americans to own and use firearms, and whereas in the growing number of municipalities, counties, and states across the nation, more than 100 jurisdictions to date, public officials and law enforcement leaders have taken steps to initiate dialogue with leading gun manufacturers about these actions. And whereas the public sector collectively represents a significant share of the marketplace for guns and ammunition in the United States, and whereas religious and civic leaders, public officials, and law enforcement officials across the nation have created the Do Not Stand Idly Buy campaign to use the collective purchasing power of the public sector to encourage life-saving innovation by the gun industry, now therefore, the mayor of University Heights proclaims that the city of University Heights will participate in this nationwide effort by taking the following actions: adding the city of University Heights to the request for information being submitted to leading firearms manufacturers from more than 100 public sector jurisdictions seeking information about the company's gun safety technologies and distribution practices, taking additional steps to encourage leadership within the gun industry in the improvement of distribution practices, and the development of new safety technologies such as testing and evaluating existing gun safety technologies, including smart guns, as well as new technologies as they become available, developing purchasing practices and specifications that maximize the public safety benefits achieved through the city's firearms purchases. Be it further proclaimed that we call upon the gun manufacturers to receive that received, the request for information from the city of University Heights and other jurisdictions across the United States, to respond in writing to the Do Not Stand Idly Buy campaign in participating jurisdictions, and be it further proclaimed that suitable copies of this proclamation be presented to the chief executive officers of Glock, Sig Sauer, Beretta, Smith &amp; Wesson, Colt, Remington, and Sturm Ruger &amp; Company. Signed, City of University Heights, Michael Dylan Brennan, Mayor. Thank you. Now, I'm signing this in duplicate, because I am giving one to Ms. Reese and Ms. Weinberger so that they may take this with them, and the other one, we will be making additional copies and forwarding them to the gun manufacturers with the request for information, which is rather extensive. Happy to show this to anyone, I decided not to read it verbatim because it is rather lengthy.
May I bring an idea about what more you could do for gun safety?
You can call it a form session, so I'm happy to take you to call later if you'd like to call me.
Okay, great.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation by Guide Studio regarding the city's new branding and logo. So, Ms. Gurkin and Mr. Cook, and you are welcome to begin.
My name is Mike Cook, I am the Communications and Civic Engagement Coordinator for the city, and also a member of the City Rebranding Committee. Let me cut to the chase. I love the new logo. Gina and Caroline from Guide Studio are here tonight to review everything that went into the development of the logo and the new branding. A little professional background on me, this is in my first rodeo. In my past jobs, I've worked with a lot of consultants, I've seen a lot of plans, a lot of proposals, a lot of designs. I've been at the American Red Cross, the Ohio State House, the Cuyahoga County Justice Center, and I've been a part of a lot of campaigns. And I can tell you that the effort that's been put into this project is as thorough as any I've ever seen. I've talked to, I've talked to a bunch of consultants, but I've never seen a team listen as well as this one, even when the feedback that they would get from me personally, or from other members of the committee, was contradictory. And as you'll see in a few minutes, the end result is really great. And I've given some folks a sneak peek at the logo, some of my friends, some of my relatives, some fellow soccer parents and so on, and the feedback has been overwhelming with positive. So with that, turn it over to Gina and Caroline.
Hi. I'm Gina from Guide Studio, and I'm here to share with you some highlights from the brand development process. We've had the pleasure to work with many of you on council, as well as several residents and business owners, and various people in the community had input in this process. So, just a little on the process. We reviewed the current University Heights brand and marketing materials and communication as a part of our process. We did a pre-discovery survey that went out to stakeholders identified by the city who would be good people to really survey and understand, you know, what they were looking for from the brand, what they felt about the current brand, what the perceptions were of University Heights. So, we got that input both from survey and from two workshops we did with the steering committee. The steering committee involved several members of council and city officials, as well as residents and representatives of the institutions that are so important here in University Heights. We also cast that net wider with a group of stakeholders, we had a discovery session with them, we're really working to understand who the audiences are here, what really makes University Heights special, what are your distinct advantages, we'll talk a little bit about that later, and we'll also share with you a positioning statement. So, we also did a tour of University Heights, though we're from the Cleveland area, our company is based here, we still like to spend the time to really get to know who our neighbors are and who we're working for, so we spent a lot of time in the community, really understand, trying to understand what makes University Heights special. So, we took that all and combined and organized that information into a brand strategy platform. Like I said, that includes identification of your audience groups, your distinct advantages, it gives you a positioning statement, Caroline will explain a little later about what that can do for you. So that's kind of the underpinnings of the brand, the brand itself, and, you know, the brand to us is much more than just a logo. We have the logo here to share tonight, and of course, that's the main visible piece that you see, but beyond that, we're looking at your voice and your key messages, what you say, how you act, how you all come together with a purpose. So, with that, we'll talk about our brand objectives. So this is what we were trying to achieve here with the brand, and we want to attract and retain residents and businesses that enhance the community, we want to elevate perception and awareness. One of the things that we found is that, you know, people didn't, that we surveyed, didn't know if University Heights even had a brand, so they were not really aware of, you know, where University Heights started, and where your surrounding communities started and stopped. So we want to highlight the quality of life here in University Heights, differentiate you from surrounding communities, demonstrate that the city is going somewhere, and improve and enhance communication with residents, business, businesses, and potentials, and that's, you know, the logo is part of that, but it's about what you say, how you say it, and how you come together with the message that resonates with them. So we'll let Karen talk a little bit about brand.
I'll be sharing some elements of the brand with you today, and for the members of our audience who don't have the benefit of seeing the screen, I will be reading some components, and then we will also be sharing some visuals on the board to my right. So, before we get started, I just want to talk a little bit about how we define brand, which can be very subjective, and everybody has sort of their own interpretation of what that is. But I think in general, a lot of people, when they think of brand, they think of a logo, or a mark, which is certainly a component of a brand, but I think on reflection, what we realize is that a brand is just what people think of when they hear your name. So, with that in mind, we didn't create a brand for University Heights, we just helped to put some definition around it, and we used input from our steering committee, our stakeholders, and some surveys to help us do that. So, as part of this process, as I mentioned, we did a lot of discovery sessions and survey work to uncover a lot of aspects of the city, among them, what we consider your distinct advantages. So we are looking for common themes and commonalities in what everybody was telling us, and this is what sort of emerged to the top. And for those who can't see the screen, there are definitions here, but in short, it's connectivity, diversity, charming neighborhoods, neighborly culture, and strong institutions. And while many communities can boast some of these individually, it's the way that these come together that make University Heights so unique. From here, we developed what we call a positioning statement. Now, a positioning statement is not something that is meant to be used in a marketing effort per se, we would not recommend that this be copied and pasted onto a website, but what it does is it's an internal statement that people can rally around, it is essentially what makes you, you. And this is used as a foundation for our marketing and communications efforts moving So much more than home. University Heights is an urban suburb that celebrates diversity. Our community's mosaic is replete with educational and religious institutions, walkable neighborhoods, local eateries, shopping and nearby amenities, offering residents the opportunity to build a life by design, find their forever homes, and plant roots.
So, on the screen now is a mood board. This is something we do before we get into the creation of the visual mark, and this just helps encapsulate some of the things and character, character traits that came out as really being key to University Heights. And of course, you're, you've got beautiful neighborhoods, but what we also found is that you're, you know, this community is very warm and neighborly. There are so many people that said that this is just a very welcoming place to be, it's very family-oriented, you're connected and central, and that education and cultural diversity is... You're connected and central, and that education and cultural diversity is really important part of your community and what helps build that mosaic that makes University Heights University Heights. Being a university town, there's also that energy of youth and education and always learning here. So that's something we keep in mind as we moved into design. So I have to share with you the logo and brand look that the steering committee has approved, and we'll also share some brand applications. These are sample applications at this point. They're just meant to show you kind of what can be, and of course, more can come from this, but it's just the tip of the iceberg to kind of get you to understand what the logo can look like in place. So here's the logo, and we'll break it down for you here. So the components that came together to make this logo are this shield shape. We've got, the shield to us means signifies safe and established neighborhoods. It felt institutional, felt established. We have the U and the H worked into the logo, so representative of University Heights, of course. And then we have these different colored pieces coming together, kind of a stained glass representing that mosaic, representing a lot of the institutions that are here. We've got religious, cultural, educational institutions, and they all have kind of windows and this kind of transparency to them. But the logo is really built around what we noticed when we looked at a map of the city, and it is that the streets of, let's see, we've got Fenwick, Traymore, Tyndale, and so on. These streets actually make the shape of your logo. They make a U and an H. So we thought, what a great way to show your connected community in those beautiful neighborhoods by showing this kind of representative string of streets, which is unique to University Heights. You've got kind of this flow of your neighborhoods that is unlike others. So that is how the mark came to be. The mark works in one color. It also works in the full color version as we showed, so it's flexible for you to use in many applications. The color palette is bright, friendly, and approachable. This is where the warmth comes through, but we also wanted to make sure that we had this dark blue color in here, so we have this kind of history, safety, established feeling to it. We're sharing some activations here. This is examples of what your business cards might look like, a fun mug. The logo could be made into a badge, banner system, signage, gateway signage. So these are sketches, but just wanted to show you how the logo can be expressed in different ways. Your social media, your website, uniforms and vehicles, events, and then just some And that is the mark.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Wise.
Thank you. I just wanted to first of all thank Gina and her team. I was one of the council members on the steering committee along with Councilman Rock and Councilman Sims, and we were extremely happy on how just the process and the collaboration you had with us. Councilman Rock and I, two years ago, tried to get something started, and this just culminates all of our efforts, and we thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, I echo that. It's been terrific. A great logo and a great mark in the positioning statement. It does capture our community very well, and I really, really enjoyed this process. One question I do have about the colors, because the last time we spoke, the projector didn't capture the true color.
Right. It didn't here either.
So are we looking at something accurate?
Well, the projector doesn't accurately capture.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
I can give you a printout, but what we did do, and I don't know if you want to pass it around, there's no everybody, but what we did do after we chatted is we went back and we shifted some of the colors a little bit darker, so they were more reflective of that conversation that we had. And we provided Pantone colors, which is the matching system that printers use, to the mayor. And when we build your brand standards, we'll be sure to list those, so everybody knows what colors are supposed to be appearing. That's one of the other deliverables that obviously we haven't started on, because this is not yet approved. But when we do, we will provide a brand standards which details how to use the logo, what colors can be used with the logo, how it can appear in one color or four colors or on a dark background, light background, things of that nature.
Yeah, I like these much better. I'd like to comment that. Thank you. It's a little more subtle, so thank you.
Gina, there were times in this process when I wasn't sure if we were going to get to where we really wanted to be, and I have to tell you, I find it very hard to believe now that that was the case, because I just love what you came up with. There were, I think, 11 different versions at one point of a logo, of a possible logo, all of varying merit, and some of them had certain design aspects I think some of us liked. But I think we really nailed it here. I see this, and I feel like it has energy, it has color, it's modern, it's vibrant, and yet it's traditional. And yet it hearkens to something that's exactly what our city is about. I mean, even incorporating a little bit of the city's grid, so that it is truly unique to us, something that nobody else would ever want to precisely replicate. This is us right here.
Exactly. Well, thank yourselves for contributing to the process. We do like to listen, so hopefully, it sounds like we answered. We answered back with something that you like.
Does anybody else have anything?
Well, I would like to say that I'm very picky, but I made the choice not to sit on the committee. I wanted to see what came out, and I am thrilled. I think this is outstanding. I saw some of the earlier versions, and I think you really brought the best out. This will do well for us. I'm not even sure how long the door knocker has been around. Do we know the history?
I spoke with somebody today who grew up here, who is now in her 50s, and she remembered it as a child. And I showed her this as a sneak preview, and she just adored it. She was just raving at how great this was, and she wished she could be here tonight to see the unveiling. Yes.
Because nothing against the door knocker, but it was time. It was definitely time. And for me, especially the tie-in with the map, I just love that, because that is the map. Anyone who's looked at that map as much as we have to look at those neighborhoods, we know that very clearly. It works beautifully. The colors are stronger than some of the earlier colors I saw. It's very good. I actually really like the single color versions, so I think this will work really well. It doesn't look like university hospitals. Congratulations, that's got to be hard to avoid.
It was a challenge.
Absolutely. So thank you for a job well done.
Anyone else? Mr. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think it's fantastic, but from my perspective, this really is just the beginning. I mean, that's running through your mind as well. What I'm looking forward to is being able to sort of rebrand and recast the neighborhoods, make it so everybody coming in and going out know where the boundaries are, what the thing is. As a council, we had an idea, I don't know, two or three years ago, we put aside money to improve areas of the city, different quadrants at a time, and this really is going to help us sort of implement that and figure out a strategy. I think this is really just the first step in some real serious neighborhood pride and identification that we can all have about the city. So I thank you. I thank you for efforts. It's really nice. I think it's nice to have something that was created at least in the last 50 or 60 years to represent the city, so I really appreciate it.
We are very excited to see where this goes from here, and of course, be involved if we can. So I think you hit the nail on the head with this. This is just the beginning, and you have a very amazing city. We're impressed by everybody that was on the committee and the stakeholders that contributed. It was really a good group with a lot of good feedback.
Were you also aware that it's the horseshoe? And a horseshoe in that form keeps all the luck above it, so we're holding all the luck in?
I didn't even think of that.
I just realized that. Yeah. Horseshoes should always be put up this way, because it holds the luck. So there's another good thing with that logo.
Write that one down.
Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? All right. Thank you for your presentation. Could somebody get the screen so that... All right. Well, the next item on the agenda, we would entertain a motion to approve the city's new logo and branding. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve the city's new logo and branding.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Wise, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a new logo and a new brand. Now, before we proceed, council members, if you look in the drawers below the table, you'll find an envelope. We took a chance and made a preliminary item.
Thank you.
And I don't want to leave anybody out. Anybody who is sitting out here in the gallery, if you look under your chairs...
Oh, my gosh.
Everybody gets a keychain.
That is really fun. Great way to get it started.
Yes. If we hadn't have voted for this, somewhere, the same folks with the 19-0 Patriots shirts would have had 400 keyrings. So anyway, this is just the beginning. We'll obviously have been rolling this throughout the community over the next few months. And I may as well use this as an opportunity to promote the upcoming September 14 Civic Engagement Awards Dinner, because one of the...
November.
Excuse me, November 14th. I don't have any of my months right today. The November 14 Civic Awards Dinner, there will be, for all attendees, well, shall we call it a goodie bag, a swag bag, a few more items that will feature this logo. And the best way to get those items will be to attend the dinner. So, all right. Gina, Caroline, thank you once again. And did you get your keyrings?
No.
Well, find a chair that hasn't been... You haven't even seen these, have you?
An empty chair.
All right. And I want to thank Mr. Cook for seeing to it that there was a keyring taped under each and every chair. Thank you, sir.
My report at the beginning would have been a little louder, but I think I blew poison from licking all those envelopes.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2018-59, authorizing the petition of Tax Commissioner to move remainder of OD and R Recycling Grant Fund to General Fund. This is on second reading. There are items C, D, E, and F that are similarly on second reading. Mr. Goff, would you speak as to these items, please?
This is the second reading of what we had at the last meeting. There was a change in state law at the start of the year, where if we have a fund that has monies residing in it after we are done with that fund, we can petition the Tax Commissioner instead of the County Police Court to move those monies, and this is for all resolutions, requesting permission from council to petition the Tax Commissioner to do so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor. I approve motion of Resolution 2018-59.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, please call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle? Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is Item D, Resolution 2018-60, authorizing the petition of Tax Commissioner to move the remainder of Community Emergency Planning Grant Fund to General Fund. This is on second reading. Mr. Goff, do you have anything further to say?
Same, my comments is the last one.
Okay, very good.
Mayor?
Yes.
2018-60 and 62 had the wrong amounts in Sections 1, I believe in 2, and those were corrected for the... Okay. I think there was a cut and paste of the first one in these others. See, for example, the amount is this. This is working. So I notified the Clerk of Council, I believe she corrected those, but I want to make sure the right things are assigned and approving the right thing.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appears Mrs. Thomas has the corrections. Okay. Is there anything further, any further discussion on this matter? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Sims, a second by Mr. Eardle. If there is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Resolution passes. Next is Item E, Resolution 2018-61, authorizing the petition of Tax Commissioner to move the remainder of NOPEC Grant Fund to General Fund. This is on second reading. Mr. Goff, anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. Incorporating the previous remarks, then, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2018-62, authorizing petition of Tax Commissioner to move remainder of Issue 2 Public Works Grant Fund to General Fund. This is on second reading. Mr. Goff, do you incorporate your previous remarks?
Yes.
Very good. Are there any questions, comments? None? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Wise, second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Item G, Ordinance 2018-63, authorizing the release of the lien of special assessments relating to certain Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority Special Assessment/Tax Increment Revenue Bonds Series 2001, University Heights, Ohio Public Parking Garage Project, and Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority Subordinate Tax Increment Revenue Bonds Series 2001B, University Heights, Ohio Public Parking Garage Project. This is on emergency. I will speak briefly on this. This is a second reading of this ordinance. We heard the first reading at the last city council meeting. We have a deadline of November 16th. It's the county's deadline. That is the deadline by which if we want to have the special assessments taken off the University Square... the University Square parcels in order to help clear the way for redevelopment, we will need to vote on this before November sixteenth. We... While we do have it listed on emergency, we had it listed on emergency last time, in this instance, it is emergency only to the extent that we do not want to wait thirty days for the ordinance to take effect, but we do want to afford public comment, or opportunity for public comment. The news has been in the Plain Dealer, on Cleveland dot com, in the Cleveland Jewish News, through various outlets, that University Square is strongly being considered for redevelopment plans. It is not final, but we are closer than we've been in many years. But one of the things that is... That needs to be done as a matter of housekeeping before we can proceed with the redevelopment is to repeal the previous special assessments so that they are no longer on the books, so that the county and the land bank can clear the ledger with respect to the outstanding tax bill that has accumulated over the last few years. To be clear, the money that's on the ledger is just a number. It is not something that is ever going to be paid. There's nobody that's sitting around not writing a check to us. The funds that were to come to... These were funds that were to be used to pay the bondholders. And right now, because of the foreclosure that occurred a couple of years ago, the bondholders actually hold the property. So, in essence, they would just be paying themselves. That's a vain act. There's no reason to do that. We would want to get this number off the books, and what we need to do is be able to show the county that this is something that the city supports, but in turn, that is also something that we want to be able to show the city and the Port Authority that this is something that the bondholders have specifically requested in writing. We're in the process of getting that formal request from Lorna Gleason, the trustee for the bondholders. She was here at the last meeting. She is in the process of getting us that formal request and making sure it says all the things it ought to say for us to be able to rely on it and also for the county and the Port Authority to honor it the way that we would like them to. Ultimately, we want to see University Square returned to productive use. It is certainly a commercial center here in our city. We have the people, we have the consumers, we have the neighborhoods to support proper development there. Right now, the present development there is failure, notwithstanding the otherwise successful target may see stores that do remain. So, that is basically it. We're not asking for a vote this evening. We're looking to put this up for a third reading on the November fifth meeting, where we would then consider it on emergency basis. And at the same time, I want to continue to allow for public feedback with regard to this project. Feedback that I've received thus far, I have not received any feedback that is at all negative or critical with respect to the idea of clearing the special assessments. There has been a smattering of input, wide array of things commenting on the possible development ideas. What you've seen in the paper is certainly one possibility. It's not a final concept by any means. So. Any questions, comments, anything anybody would like to add up here?
Mayor, if I could just very briefly, procedurally, since we have a two-reading rule in our charter, my suggestion to council would be to place this on the table, and then we'll take it off the table when we're ready to consider it, once we've received the correspondence from the bondholders.
Very good. Thank you for the procedural guidance.
Mayor, I would move the table to the side.
Very good. We have a motion to table by Mr. Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a second by Mr. Wiseman. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll on the motion to table.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. This is tabled until the November fifth meeting. Next is Item J, Motion to Authorize Public Bidding for a New City Hall Chairlift.
Item H, perhaps?
I'm sorry?
Is it Item H?
Item H. Oh. Did I call the wrong? Yes.
To clarify.
Oh, yes. To clarify, Item H, Motion to Authorize Public Bidding for a New City Hall Chairlift. I know that our city engineer is here. If anybody has any questions for him, I can tell you that we did seek one bid earlier this year for a chairlift. Earlier this year, we also talked somewhat about the possibility of adding an elevator to the building. We've also considered that the hundreds of thousands of dollars that it will likely take to add an elevator to this building, we may want to defer until we have a more thorough review of our facilities and whether we're going to continue to use this building for a municipal purpose and for what municipal purpose, and whether we would move City Hall and administrative offices to some other place. And it seems that whether we do that or not, we have an emerging situation with regard to our chairlift. Our chairlift is at least thirty years old. It is the... I believe it's the only chairlift this building has ever had for when it would have had a chairlift, if you recall, when the Americans with Disabilities Act came in, what, nineteen ninety or ninety-one. A chairlift like that is necessary for us to be ADA compliant, that, you know, short of actually building an elevator. We did have an incident not long ago where an attendee at a public meeting here was unable to get down the steps as the chairlift malfunctioned. We brought out service, and they could not find anything wrong with it. They described it at the time as being a matter of user error, but more to the point, the chairlift is simply no longer reliable. The users who are using it were our own fire department, people who have used that chairlift for many years. They know how to operate it when it works right. It no longer works right. It no longer is reliable. And we cannot ever again embarrass anyone or make someone feel uncomfortable by being stuck at the top of these stairs and have no way to get them down, short of physically carrying them or having them drag themselves down the stairs. That simply cannot be. So, we've asked to put this on the agenda. We'd ask to move for public bidding. We had a single bid a few months ago, which is stale at this point, but we're... That bid was in the neighborhood of sixty-two thousand dollars. I don't know... Yeah. Mr. Chuni, is there anything you'd care to add with respect to chairlift?
No. This is just a, you know, motion about the bid. We're not approving anything. We wanted to put the specs together, get a collector bid, and then come back to council for approval.
Mrs. Partey?
Thank you. Is this an unusually difficult staircase? Or in any other way, does it present any difficulties for a chairlift? Because it seems that this has often been a problem. And I'm just wondering if it's the curves or the nature of it. Is there anything?
No, I don't think it's anything difficult. I mean, it's... I think our chairlift is old and it's not reliable, as the mayor said. And we have to have ADA access to the second floor and to the basement, so I think we need this.
So, a brand-new chairlift would pretty much...
It's going to look very similar to what it looks like today. So, it's just going to be one that'll be reliable, we hope, and functions better. I mean, if service comes out and says it's a user error, we get our... Our firemen use it all the time. They know how to operate this thing. It's... There's something wrong with it, yeah. And I only had one quote, it was like three, four, or five months ago, whenever it was. There's certainly other companies out there that have bid on it. I was just interested, curious what it would take to replace it at that time, so I got the quote from Gable Elevator.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Chuni, as long as he's up at the podium?
Sure, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Please proceed.
And I'm glad, Mr. Chuni, that you made the clarification that we really did not get bids on this previously. You just solicited a single quote.
Correct.
And I'm also glad that you clarified the fact that this chair, in all likelihood, won't be any different from what we currently have, it's just that it'll be reliable.
It'll look very similar. Yes.
I mean, actually, from what I recall, not only will it look similar, it will operate similarly. And maybe somebody else will come up with a different design, but the question that I have, just to feel confident that we will get a competitive set of bids, how will this be bid?
Normal bidding process. We'll advertise in the newspapers and probably for three weeks.
I mean, this is not like an everyday kind of item.
Yeah.
It's specialized.
Yeah.
So, I want to make sure that folks that specialize in products such as this are included in the notification.
Notified. Okay. We'll also probably have a pre-bid meeting, and they're going to have to come out here and walk the site so they know what they're bidding on. I'm sure we'll do that.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Wiseman?
This is actually a question for Mr. Chuni, just a discussion point.
Okay.
So, I can wait.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Chuni before we proceed with discussion? Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Mr. Wiseman, here at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echoing Mr. Sims' comments, I believe what he's saying is that rather than have a passive bid process where we put it out and we hope that the local people who are paying attention put a bid in, we actually maybe go searching for companies in different locations that maybe do something like this in an effort to make sure that we get something that's a little more whiz-bang than the same thing with new gears and such. I mean, I... Personally, I'm sorry that it's taken so long. We took this on council very seriously. Mr. Chuni was... Went to the trouble of putting together several different scenarios whereby we might put an elevator in City Hall. Unfortunately, each of them... I thought the number was closer to a million dollars, maybe above six hundred thousand dollars, something like that.
That is how I recall it.
Yeah. And they each involved losing a significant amount of space in the various rooms that the elevator was going to be in. So, it's... We have taken this very seriously. We've tried to slice this in different ways. I think we decided to go with the lift, but we didn't realize, I think, until recently that it just doesn't work. So, I'm happy to do this. I want everybody to feel welcome to come into chambers. It might not be as private as an elevator, but at least there won't be... Nobody would feel like they're inconveniencing the crowd. They'll be able to come in and out quickly, and it'll work. So, I'm glad that we're doing this. I hope we can expand the search, maybe take a little longer. I don't know, depending on... I'm sure there are companies that specialize in this, maybe not the ones we always deal with, so... Thank you very much, and thank you for putting the bid together and moving the process along, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Wiseman. Does anybody else have anything on this? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I would motion... I'm moving that we authorize the city to seek public bids for a new City Hall chairlift.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second? Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Wiseman. If there is any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Next is Item I, A Motion to Hold an Executive Session Immediately Following This Regular Meeting for Purpose of Discussing Personnel, Legal, or Real Estate Matters. We do have a real estate matter to discuss, so I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session at the conclusion of the regular portion of the meeting following the directors and council committee reports.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Sims. There is no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Before we get into directors' reports, I'd like to take a moment to introduce to all of you, as well as to the members of council, Rachel Mullen. Rachel, if you'll stand. Ms. Mullen is our new executive assistant and special projects coordinator here for the city of University Heights today. It's her first day. So, thank you, Rachel. Directors' reports, finance.
Finance has been working on moving forward the health insurance renewal process. We've been using a product called FormFiR to gather data on our employees that are eligible for health insurance, so we can submit that to the various different entities we're going to be expecting to get quotes from. We have to do this because we are too small of an employer in terms of our enrolled employees with Medical Mutual to actually get our actual claims data. And by doing this using an online platform, FormFiR, we're able to better ensure HIPAA compliance by avoiding having any of this confidential information in paper form anywhere in our offices. We did receive from Medical Mutual, who is our current... Who we currently insure directly with, an oral offer that was to lock us into two years. Unfortunately, due to our union agreements, we can't even really consider it because it was something they wanted at the end of this week. But the fact that they're looking to lock in at two years and the rate was reasonably reasonable, that it looks like will probably be competitive in terms of what we'll be getting insurance-wise when we do get the full quotes. We've been moving forward in finance with arrangements to move forward with banking changes that we're probably going to do at the first of the year in terms of bank accounts. I was out to meet with representatives of each of the branches, they have local banks here in town, to hand out the requests for proposals. I've gotten feedback from higher levels up at several of those banks that they're expressing interest, and we'll be moving forward with that after the time of a lot for them to respond back. At this time, that's all I have unless there are questions that a council has.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mrs. Wise?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the city allowed to join consortiums like ERC for healthcare?
Consortiums for healthcare? Yes, we are allowed to join consortiums. Actually, our current broker is expecting us to give responses back from a government employee pool in Lake County and another pool in Summit County. So, yes, we are eligible to do that.
Okay. I don't know if you have time or want to check something else out, but ERC is a popular consortium in Cuyahoga County. I've had a lot of experience with them, and they have extremely good rates because their pool is so large.
We'll definitely look into that.
Any other questions for Mr. Goff? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Next, Director of Law, Luke McConville.
Counsel, I want to give you a brief rundown of our latest BZA hearing. We had a BZA hearing that was of unusual length that lasted for about four hours relating to a single item. to a single item. We had an applicant who came in with voluminous evidence, including exhibits, and exercised his right to cross-examine witnesses in the traditional sense, which we don't often see. The board members were very courteous and diligent and exercised some of their recent training in going into executive session and then coming out and requesting that the applicant and his neighbor, who was also present, allow the board to try to mediate their dispute. We spent probably about an hour of time in what I would call really a classic mediation that resulted in a seven-point agreement, and one of the, those points was that the neighbors consider the hatchet buried and get along. So it was a very good result for the city, and the BZA members are to be commended for their commitment to the process. In addition, I'm hoping to have the articles of incorporation filed for the CIC sometime this week, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions for the law director? Seeing none, next, public safety. We'll start with police. Chief Rogers.
Mayor, no reports tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chief Rogers. Next, fire. Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I just wanted to say that the open house we had on Sunday was a great success. I thank everybody from within the city as well as outside that helped us out with the organization and planning and running it. Still getting positive feedback today over that. Last Friday, our ladder truck committee met down in Columbus. It was a pre-proposal meeting where we went over all the specifics that we would be looking for, for them to draft a proposal for us. We've been spending quite a bit of time involved with this process and various meetings, including down in Columbus, mainly because of the structure of this project being so large, some of the restrictions with the size of our station, and some of the complexity of the ladder truck itself. So we had a productive meeting and came up with something that's probably about 98% there. This week, they will be printing the proposal to give to us, so we'll be looking to bring this to the safety committee for further communication about it. We started this week, going forward for the next two weeks, hydrant flushing. We'll be doing the east, I'm sorry, the west half of the city the first week and the eastern half the second week, weather permitting. Still in the process of doing hiring and promoting. Hopefully, we'll pick up the pace a little more after the next civil service meeting and move things along here going into November. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Perko, and, or, excuse me, Chief Perko. Is there any, any questions for the chief?
No questions, but I just have to say the, the open house was a great hit. I think it was excellent, and I look forward to even more next year. Should be good.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. And also, just for everyone's edification, the civil service committee will be meeting this Friday at 8:00 a.m. Very good. Thank you. Yes?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Wiseman.
For the chief or Mr. Goff? You don't have to get up chief, but for the safety committee meeting, when we're looking at the fire truck, if we could have various different financing options presented to us, not just, I know we spoke about leasing, but I would like to look at different options that we have as council in terms of financing. I know it's a very expensive item, so leasing, purchasing, raising money, anything else, anything we look at, I think that would help us make a decision. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next is service. Mr. Pecorni is out today, but I do have a written report constituting four items on two pages. First item is cleaning up our mixed stream recycling. The Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District and our recycler, Kimball, are requesting help to clean our mixed stream recycling by limiting the types of materials placed into the stream. Please limit the materials to include cans, cartons, glass bottles and jars, paper and corrugated cardboard boxes, along with plastic bottles and jugs in your home recycling. You can cut your trash in half when you combine only these five items in your 10-gallon blue or clear recycling bag. Cans, empty and rinse. Cartons, empty and rinse. Replace the cap because it's too small to be recycled by itself. Glass bottles and jars, empty and rinse. Paper and boxes, flattened cardboard items and cereal boxes, to save space and securely tie them together. Plastic bottles and jugs, empty and rinse. Replace the cap. Items placed in your 10-gallon blue or clear collection bags for recycling should be clean, empty, and dry. Recycle more, recycle better, recycle right. Additional information can be found at cuyahogarecycles.org. And yes, there is a city-specific page for us on that page, so if you wanna see any city-specific information, it's basically this, but it also goes over Kimball and how our recycling collections in our backyard, not on our curb. Next item, keep your yard waste safe, clean, and recyclable. The University Heights Service Department collects yard waste from all residences weekly. Leaves, clippings, and other organic material placed in craft paper bags for collection on your weekly rubbish day must be free of contamination. Paper litter, plastic bags, flower pots, rocks, and dirt must be discarded in your garbage and not in lawn leaf bags. These materials must be kept out of your yard waste, not only to help ensure the materials can be properly recycled, but to keep our service department employees and the recycling staff safe. Sticks and brush, cut in four-foot lengths, weighing less than 50 pounds, and secured tightly with, tightly with twine, will be collected weekly. Loose brush piles will be collected when equipment and manpower become available. This will not be a weekly service. The service department will pick up loose leaves this fall, starting October 15th. Please do not mix sticks or branches with leaves as it slows down collection and prevents crews from cleaning the tree lawn. Please place the leaves on your tree lawn for collection. Ordin 660.15 prohibits placing leaves in the street. Next is our semi-annual household hazardous waste collection and paper shredding. Friday, November 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and Saturday, November 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Household hazardous waste and paper shredding drop-off will be available in the service department yard behind City Hall. Please note that the city will not accept latex paint containers at this collection. Latex paint containers can be dried out and then disposed of in weekly trash. Hazardous waste collection includes oil-based paint, varnish automotive fluids, oil, gasoline, kerosene, pesticides, adhesives, driveway sealer, roofing tar, and rechargeable batteries. Confidential paper and document shredding. Papers dropped off on Friday, March 9 will be placed in locked containers until the truck arrives on Saturday, March 10 at 9:00 a.m. Please remove all metal clips, plastic bags, or other materials which would contaminate the paper or damage equipment. Staples are acceptable. Then finally, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, the NEORSD, Local Sewer System Evaluation Study and Storm Water Management Program are ongoing. The city administration recently met with representatives of NEORSD for an update regarding NEORSD programs. Their local sewer system evaluation study, being conducted by consultant Wade Trim, during the past two years, has completed much of the system evaluation, investigation, and assessment. They are now beginning to identify potential system improvements, costs, benefits, and operation and maintenance policies. We anticipate their issuance of a report and their request for system improvements in the future. Representatives also providing, provided information on the regional storm water management program aimed at reducing storm water flooding and stabilizing open streams. They will provide a storm water master plan once it is completed. Information regarding storm water fee credits and cost-saving programs are available on their website at neorsd.org. The 2016 to 2021 billing and rate and account information are also available online. It's a very fancy way of saying some of our sewers are as old as 1912, and we're gonna have to replace a whole lot of them coming up. And that's what the report's gonna be all about, and that's not gonna be cheap, but it's something that's gonna have to be done. So we'll have to look out for it, and we have to prepare for it. And that concludes service director's report. Next is the building commissioner, Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. The Cleveland Community MCHVA has redone their plans, and they were resubmitted to the ARB and approved. These revised plans are now approved by ARB. We expect that they will want to go ahead and start pulling permits pretty soon to begin this project. You may already know that we have been approved by the Ohio Development Services Agency for our CRA. This was completed on the 9th of October. I received confirmation on the 10th. If I may read just part of this, says pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 373566, "I hereby confirm the findings of the City of University Heights to be valid and consistent with applicable legislative requirements. The area designated as the University Heights Community Reinvestment Area by the City of University Heights within the aforementioned petition for area certification is determined to be a community reinvestment area executed at Columbus, Ohio, the 9th day of October." So now that's official. I have been receiving notice from our prosecutor as to the court docket. When that comes into my possession, I'll be happy to pass that along. Coming up, we have six cases on the docket. 2421 Traymore Road, 2423 Eaton Road, 2232 Brockway Road, 13641 Cedar Road, 2452 Eaton Road, and 3797 Hillbrook Road. On a personal note, I have been summoned to jury duty. I will be off the week of November 5th downtown for Court of Commerce. And also, something that I think Mrs. Drucker will talk more about, the Bibby Bop Restaurant that you've seen under construction is determined to open tomorrow. We've given them a temporary certificate of occupancy, so they're well able to do that. And you might wanna stop by and sample some of their wares. Any questions?
Mr. Sims?
I think I have a counsel.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Mrs. Wise?
I have two questions about the CRA. One is, I know that it came fairly quickly after we had to make some legislative changes, so did we figure out what that was?
Not yet. We've, I've been in touch with a gentleman at the Ohio Development Services Agency named Daniel Strasser, and, and trying to figure out what they approved and whether there are any additional steps beyond our amending legislation that need to occur. So we're hoping to have that answer this week, and we'll make sure that we've taken all the steps necessary to exclude the three University Square Garage parcels from the CRA.
Okay. And the other question was, do we have a system in place now if somebody wants to apply for that abatement?
That question might be better answered by our finance director.
Well, we're working on the forms now.
We're working on that, too.
Yeah, I mean, I know it sounds like we buried the lead by not making a big announcement at the beginning of the meeting, or unrolling a, a big press release about the announcement, you know, of the approval of our CRA, but it's only out of prudence because we wanted to make sure that, that what was approved is, is exactly what we intended. And, and once we have that, well then, you will see us screaming from the rooftops, hey, we've got a CRA, and we've got 15-year tax payments on major reinvestment in our city, 'cause it's gonna be great. Oh, Mr. Sims?
Yes, thank you. My question was related to the homes that you ran off, Eaton, Hillbrook, wherever. What are those homes?
These homes are, are being taken to court for violations of our housing code, particularly the property maintenance code or the rental section of our code.
Okay.
In, in two cases, these are properties that refused to rent, register their rentals after repeated notice.
Okay. All right. I just didn't know what you were referring to. And also, do you work with any of the local Realtors, or is it possible for us to some way keep a inventory of, doesn't have to be precise, but to have some sense of what homes are for sale and sold and are in some state of peril?
Well, actually, yes. We do get reports of the transfers of homes within the community, so we are alerted on that, and I, that's a pretty regular basis. I think that comes out monthly.
And that comes from?
That comes from county.
From the county?
Yeah. What that is detailing the transfers of titles. So in, in some cases, it could be a home transferring title that never appeared on the real estate market because it went from father to son.
Right, right.
But anything that transfers title would be on that report.
Okay. I, I just, I'm curious because, and this is no science behind it, but it seems to be a, a large number of homes or an increasing number of homes that are for sale. And I know stuff like that is seasonal, but I, I just wanna understand what's going on with the housing in University Heights.
Well, we could take a sample over a period of time and average it out and see if, for example, this year, there were more transfers than last year or the year before. But statistics, I think, have to be taken with a, a certain grain of salt, because they may point one way when they actually don't really represent that. But certainly, we have that available. We have those transfers available. We have that information.
All right. Could you share it, please? I'm, I'm curious. I would like to see it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward it along.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you both. And are there any further questions for Mr. McReynolds? Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Next report is city engineer, Joe Chuni.
Just two quick items to update you on construction. We did finish the paving here on City Hall campus over the weekend. It will be striped probably next Saturday. Again, working with the building department and the service to move stuff around so we can get all the stripes in there. They'll be doing the layout during the week, this week. The paving up there at Cedar Taylor is also done. They completed that where the bumparts are. It needs to be restriped. Again, they'll probably bring the striper in one time when they're doing it here. I'll confirm that they'll do that as well. And the water line job on Groveland, they put all the pipe in as of Friday. You won't see a lot of action this week. This is the time of the process of putting in the pipe where it has to be cleaned and chlorinated and flushed until the water is safe to drink. So you'll see there's like two pits at both ends of the street, and they're, they're running water through there with chlorine, and once it passes three samples, Cleveland Water takes the samples, then it's, and then you're free to go as far as hooking up the houses, and you can drink the water again. So this week, there won't be a lot of action. I usually get a lot of calls at this time because, hey, where, where'd the guys go? They left. But they didn't really leave, they just, it's a, it's part of the process, so. Once it, once it passes, they'll start hooking up the homes and put the street back together, so I'd imagine, usually takes a good week, though, before it passes the samples. End of report.
Okay, very good.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Sims?
The earlier conversation about sewers and storm water and all of that made me realize that I hadn't really heard anything this year about inspections and cleaning. Are we still doing those things?
Sure, yeah.
And so we don't need any legislation around that? I mean, usually, to my recollection, we usually approve something related to going out there to make sure that it's done and that it's done at the.
We bid out a two-year project, a two-year program that Mr. Pecorni handles, and as far as cleaning and flushing sewers and also cleaning catch bases. And I think we're only in year one. We have another year to go before we have to go out for bids again. And, and really, Jeff handles that, that whole program in-house. We do like a third of the city each year, and he, he picks the streets and, and how he rotates it. But we are still continuing to do it.
Thank you.
Do we have an update on Cedar Green?
They will be working this week.
All right.
They got delayed last week, and it was a sign issue, but they, they will be out there this week, I've been told, yes.
Okay. And they, they figured out what to name the project?
Pardon me?
They figured out what to name the project?
Oh, yeah. You mean on the sign?
Yes.
That was the issue.
Yes.
I mean, it's only a two-to-three-week job, so once they get going, it'll get, it'll go quick.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next, communications and civic engagement, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. The weather today has been windy and rainy. Forecast looks like that the rest of the week, so the trash tribune is flying all over the city, absorbing water, it's in the street, it's on lawns. This will be the last issue. It goes out like this. We've come up with a five-step plan to replace the newsletter, or replace how we get the newsletter out. We're gonna be mailing it to senior citizens. We're gonna combine two public lists to get, probably it'll be, I think, up to 90% of the senior citizens in the city on these public lists. We are going to mail them to apartment complexes which don't use city trash services, so they'll be able to get the newsletter for the first time. Whilst, the main way we're gonna get it out is through our email list, and then finally, we are going to start dropping it off at local restaurants and the libraries and other businesses we're already in discussion with. A few about doing that. Susan Drucker is volunteering to be a great help, as she's meeting with businesses, talking to them about helping get the newsletter out. So newsletters, the news is still gonna get out, it's gonna get out to more people, and it's gonna be dry. The Civic Awards, as the mayor mentioned earlier, coming up on November 14th. We're going to let the award recipients know probably this week at the beginning of awards, so they can obviously, you know, be at the dinner. We'll let people know ahead of time, so it's not, you know, a suspense and people are coming to, you know, not getting an award. You know, obviously, we're gonna let people know that they're giving an, giving an award. We've already started a campaign to sell tickets. It's been mentioned in the newsletter, it's all over social media as well. We have, are bringing back some of our citizen committees. Communications met last week, as did sustainability. The mayor and I had a talk about this today. We're gonna have at least three more by the end of the year. I know Parks and Rec will be our, the main priority, and we'll figure out a couple more to add based on, based on need, and then the rest will be rolled out the end of the year. Or, early next, we're gonna do a recycling meeting on November 1st at the Heights Library, as the mayor mentioned. As the mayor mentioned in Jeff Pecorni's report, recycling is a huge issue, so we're going to have Diane Bickett from the Cairo County Solid Waste District come out to the chamber for talk. It's going to be called "The Limits of Recycling: Why We Won't Recycle Our Way Out of Our Waste Problem." So again, that'll be November 1st at 6:30 at the Heights Library. I was unable to attend the last council meeting. I know there was a couple of questions about the city magazine. I brought samples of what, samples of what Lynn Hurst in South Uklu do. So it's a, your typical glossy magazine. So ours is being published by the same company, the Cleveland Jewish News, so ours will be similar, but as I've said a couple minutes ago, the difference will be ours will be better. And finally, let's see, actually, that's all I need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Oh, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook? All right.
Oh, and also to get the word out, I know we've gotten a lot of calls about this at City Hall and a lot of inquiries on social media. Halloween, our trick-or-treat in University Heights is October 31st, as it should be, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I'm working with Chief Rogers to distribute their, his department will be distributing candy as they're out on patrol that night. According, and we've done some research on this, according to CandyStore.com, the most popular candy in the state of Ohio is?
M&M's.
M&M's. M&M's was number two last year, but they've surpassed Blow Pops and Starburst and M&M's will be what the department will be passing out.
As a Reese's Cup fan, I gotta demand a recount. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next is Economic Development, Mrs. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last week, Patrick and I had a meeting with a representative from the Merchant Association. They are the, that's the group that represents the businesses in the Cedar Taylor district area, the business area over there. And we began discussing plans about the streetscaping that's been done on the Cleveland Heights side and how we can bring ourselves up to speed and match that. This is perfect timing, actually, with the logo being approved because this really is a grand entryway into, into our city. And so this is something where with the two corners there that we would want to take advantage of, really to show the logo, to identify University Heights, as well as to coincide with the streetscaping that's across the street. Because we want to work together so that everything blends, it works well together, but we still can identify ourselves as University Heights. People know when they have arrived in our city. So we'll be working with them. That's going to be in the beginning of next year and so we will continue to work with that association and the businesses around there. And then, of course, any final plans we come up with or designs, then, of course, we'll bring them to council for your approval before anything is done. We made our big push for the Small Business Saturday this past week. And remember, we're taking our, an offshoot from the AMEX program and we're, ours is Think Local, Shop University Heights. We currently had 28 businesses that have signed up and committed to participate. And we still have a few more businesses to visit in the next couple of days. Now, now, these are businesses where people can go in and either purchase a service or purchase an item. So obviously, like the financial institutions, the grocery stores, things like that, they, they aren't a part of this program. But we'll, we'll have a second part of the program where we go out just as part of thanking all of the businesses for being a part of our community and doing business here because we don't want them to feel excluded. But this event in, in particular is for the Saturday that follows Thanksgiving. I'm continuing to build the database for the commercial, retail, and office spaces throughout the city. And then we'll, I will be attaching a link to the webpage so that if you click on that for potential business owners who want to locate their business here in the city, they can click on that and see all the available spaces with the square footage and, and where they're located. And it'll come up, it comes up with a map that identifies that. That is not active at this point. I'm hoping to get that active by the end of this week. Dollar Bank will be hosting a moderated panel discussion. It is resources for small businesses to access capital. The event is going to be held Wednesday, October 24th, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM at the Dollar Bank University Heights Office, which is located at 2200 Warrensville Center Road. And finally, Bibby Bop Asian Grill, which is located at 13930 Cedar Road, will have their grand opening tomorrow and in celebrate, which is October 16th. And in celebrating their grand opening, they will have free food from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, as well as giveaways and bubble tea samples. So hopefully, the weather will be nice because I'm sure the line will be long. And everyone is welcome.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Mr. Weissman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you email around a thing about the small businesses and said that was, which bank? Capital One Bank?
The Dollar One Bank?
Dollar Bank, yeah.
With the list of businesses?
Just, you know, the, the announcement about Dollar One, the October 24th.
Oh, okay.
Small business thing. If you could just email that around.
Oh, okay. The resources for small businesses to access?
Right, right.
To, just to council or you? Because I have flyers.
Well, I just want to have an email so I can forward it to people.
Oh, wonderful.
Telling them that there's this program going.
I will scan you the flyer.
Excellent.
And I'll scan everyone the flyer.
Yes. Thank you.
And I think we have a few flyers still downstairs in the reception area. So you may want to grab one on the way out, but that won't be the same as having it electronically. So, very good. Okay. Anything else? Mrs. Weiss.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm excited about the gateway project. Is your department going to be in charge of the other three gateways in the city and how those kind of designs are going to, are going to look?
I will be if the mayor tells me I will be. The reason on this area in particular is because of just working with that merchants group. But there is a great need for, the mayor and I have already talked about, the consistency, especially if you use any materials and signs. So let's say you have a sign at Cedar Taylor, but then you have the Purvis Park, the materials that hold that sign, you want those to be consistent throughout the city. And that's something we've been talking with Gina about as well. And so I'm sure they will all play a role because this is all part of the rebranding. It's all part of selling ourselves, marketing the city. And the consistency is so important that, that that's why, that's why you're doing all this. It's this brand new, it's a renewal for the city. So, so I'm sure in some capacity, yes, I'll be working on it. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Community Development, Mr. Grogan Myers. Could not be here this evening, but I have his report. The city is still accepting project ideas for its Community Development Supplemental Grant application due November 30th. You may email development@universityheights.com or go to www.universityheights.com/cdsg. That's CDSG for Community Development Supplemental Grant to submit your ideas. A public meeting has been set for November 15th at 7:00 PM in Cleveland Heights City Hall to kick off NOAACA's Transportation For Liveable Communities Initiative, TLCI, Study of Taylor Road. The study will look at possible ways to restripe Taylor Road, including back-in-angle parking, bike lanes, and a road diet in the Cedar Taylor Business District. If I may expound on that, the TLCI study of Taylor Road, as I understand, is going to be from Fairmount Boulevard all the way up to, well, it's, it extends the, I believe, the full length of Taylor Road. Mr. Juney, do you happen to recall?
The day it goes to Mayfield Road.
Mayfield Road?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. So, so our part of South Taylor is a portion of it, but they're looking at it in a much broader sense. And it happens to be the day after our Civic Awards event, so we can get right back to it the next day, going to the TLCI study presentation. The item three, the, the city has been notified, oh, we know this, though, of its application to establish a community reinvestment area, CRA. Application has been approved. We're working with the state to finalize details and the application process for residents. Look for updates on the city's website and social media and information as information and the application become available. Community and economic development have been working to find a contractor to remove the curb and parking lot dumpster enclosure and parking lot light on the city's property adjacent to 2115 Taylor Road, the former KFC property. We have found a contractor and we are working with them to develop a timeline for the removal. Once the timeline has been established, we will notify council and the local businesses. Mr. Grogan Myers advises that you may, or that he is welcome to answer any questions you may have for him and to email or call him accordingly. And that will conclude the Community Development Coordinator's report. Next are Reports of Council. In no particular building, Chairman Mark Weissman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with the city administration's desire to put more time, effort, and money into the Building Department vis-à-vis the rental registrations and having more inspectors and having more of an eye on rental homes, it is my desire to have a public meeting where we will discuss residents' views of the renter population and suggestions they may have for council for things that we may do or specific issues that we may look for. So if all my colleagues would look to their emails for some proposed dates in the month of November, not the week of Thanksgiving, but the other weeks in November, there are five weeks in November, so I think we can, I think we can fit it in. But the idea is to give council and a different perspective and to give the public a chance to chime in. I heard from a number of residents during the several meetings that we had with the landlords where they had issues, but they didn't want to come during a meeting where there were so many landlords they felt like they're, wouldn't get the chance to say what they had to say. So we'll hear from the other side, so to speak, before this administration decides to tackle that and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Weissman. Next, Civic Information, Mrs. Cameron. She is absent. Does anybody from the Civic Information Committee have a report? Seeing none, there will be no report. Finance Chair, Susan Partey. Mrs. Partey?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met last Wednesday, October 10th, to further discuss the item agenda regarding the liens, the forgiving of the assessments at the University Square location. We discussed it to better understand it, to be prepared to vote with all of our questions answered and in full knowledge. This has been addressed eloquently and in length by the mayor, so I think that's sufficient. We'll be voting on it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Partey. Next is Government Affairs, Governmental Affairs, Mrs. Weiss.
No report, ma'am.
No report. Very good. Thank you. Next is Recreation, Mr. Erdl.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erdl. No report. Next is Safety, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor. We have a meeting scheduled for November 7th. That seemed to be the most consensus amongst our two chiefs and the committee itself. So we will plan to meet here at 7:00 o'clock downstairs in the conference room at office number seven. Topics, as Chief Perko had mentioned, was the ladder truck, so we'll see more information regarding the ladder truck and potentially the financing, financing with that. And one other item that has come up around the summertime was dog leashes in the park, so I'd like to discuss our dog leash ordinance, just so we're all on the same page. So we'll discuss that in the meeting on November 7th.
Mr. Rock, you said 7:00 in conference?
Correct.
Thank you. Great.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. So that meeting is November 7th, 7:00?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Service and Utilities, Mr. Sims.
No report, Mayor.
No report. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Finally, Committee of the Whole, Mrs. Partey.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, well, this concludes the regular portion of the meeting. We still have an executive session to do. We will recess briefly to allow you the opportunity to exit so that we may, so that we may proceed with our executive session. Thank you very much, as always, for joining us this evening. We're always available for questions to you. Have a good night.